What's the date today? Twenty first?
Twenty first.
Good, I know. Good evening, it being February 21st, 2019. This is the Acushion Planning Commission. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What do we have to do today? Do you want the... We have to open the public hearing for the chief to speak, or can he speak on that before?
He may speak within the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm not in that much of a rush.
I know you're busy, we want to get you out of here early.
I appreciate that.
Item number one, minutes of regular January 17th, 2019 meeting.
Motion to approve the meeting. Minutes and eight.
Second.
All in favor? While I'm signing this, gentlemen, if you want to introduce yourself to the beautiful people on TV, name. So, with you Henry?
Henry Young Planer.
Rick Ellis?
Mark Sodaro.
Mark Sodaro. With that, gentlemen, it'd be kind of up to sign these vouchers for our wonderful secretary, Don. I don't know if you gentlemen want this mass rules of court, state key rules, federal and federal key rules, 2019. Four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Say we continue to utilize the services of town council, so we don't have to read the six.
Saving ourselves four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
That sounds great. Do we have to vote on that? Appeals from different towns, nothing on the line. Item number four, planner update. You want to do that at the end of the meeting?
Do that at the end.
Item number five, discussion of additions, amendments, and edits to zoning Article 8, and set public hearing for them. Also on the planners update?
Yes, I'll include their planners update.
With that, that would be fantastic. With that? We're running here, we don't... Why?
Because if somebody is kind of short for the public hearing.
Okay.
It needs to happen, who we expected to happen.
So we've got to wait till quarter of, I can't do it all?
Or we can start on the planner update at four.
I'll just...
Yes, let's do that.
Okay.
I can kill two minutes.
So I've been working with Jim Merritt, the land commissioner, to update some of the bylaws related to zoning. We've been working on that over the past month, I'd say. So it's a lot of edits and enhancements to help him enforce his end of the deal. We make the bylaws, he enforces them. So when we can create a better tool for him, that works. So the idea is, we'll wrap that up this month, and then next month, I can provide you with a draft of that, and we can set a date for the public hearing in April.
Okay.
And then we can review and approve to the extent... I mean, there will be many, many edits, but we can approve to the extent the board wants to. And then there are town meeting in May, and get those changes embedded into the bylaw, which requires two-thirds majority because it's...
The bylaw change.
So that's... I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Next meeting, you'll get a copy of the draft edits.
Okay, have to have public hearings on each one of those?
So in the March... Yes, it's the answer to the question.
If it's possible, if we could distribute it a day ahead of time. I hate to be here, trying to look at it and figure out what it all means.
I'll try to get it to you... I was going to give you a draft of what we have right now, but it's... There's still a lot of changes that are going to be made. I will try to get a reasonable draft as soon as possible.
Okay, I mean, even a day ahead of time, then I can sit down and look it over.
Okay.
And comment on it with a little...
Are there a lot of them, maybe?
You know, sometimes we'll call for an edit that's going to hit every zoning area. So, you know, that's five different changes then. So every time we make a change, it's going to affect something in every zoning category. Yeah. It's times five, so it starts adding up pretty quickly. There are probably, you know, two or three themes. One of which is, if you're familiar with concept of an upland circle?
That's a new one.
Okay.
An upland circle?
An upland circle. I'll let Jim explain that, but essentially, it creates a circle that can fit within the required width and depth of a property. And it pushes up against the front setback, and suggests that that area be upland, so you're not crossing through any weapons to get to upland in the back. And then we wanted to memorialize something that we are doing as a matter of routine right now, and that is, every time a subdivision comes through, or a solar project comes through, we take it to our Tuesday department, Tuesday morning department meeting, and everybody has an opportunity to review and comment on that. So we'll be putting that into the bylaw that department shares. There are certain department shares that should comment on a plan that's going to require a special permit. I mean, our meetings are open to the public. They can do that as it is right now. This sort of mandates that they weigh in on projects that require...
So we're telling the police chief what to do, is that what you're saying?
We're kindly asking the police chief to participate, as much as he's comfortable with.
As long as it's not a check-in on my vehicle when I leave, I'll go along. Or a representative, is that right?
So I think I killed five minutes.
Yep. I have one question.
Yes.
In terms of these infamous sidewalks, did you find out anything in terms of responsibilities for keeping it clear and open, and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it appears that that is the property owner's responsibility to keep the sidewalks clear.
And the town repairs them.
Yes. So I won't get any legal opinion.
Okay, I mean, again, I'm just... Where it's kind of a new thing for us to quote, "require sidewalks."
Right.
So now, if there's only one on one side of the road, then we're going to have people coming in saying, "Why do I have it on my side of the road, and he doesn't have it?" But that's...
Yep.
With that being seven forty-five, is there a motion to continue the public hearing on Moniza Estates? Motion to continue, Moniza Estates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, you guys enough to introduce yourself, even though we know who you are?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jeff Paul, with SciTech Engineering, representing DPM Development, applicant for Moniza Estates. So since the last time we met, I don't know if... I think we looked at the revised plan. I think I had just submitted at that point, the first revision. We've made a subsequent revision, there were a couple of minor changes. I mean, real minor, like detail-oriented stuff, that we made to the plan. Nothing of any consequence, just stuff that the consultant engineer was looking for. So the plan that I have before you tonight is that revised plan. I apologize, I meant to bring in more copies for you. I don't have them with me tonight, but I can certainly get them to you, you know, as soon as possible. But I do have a letter. I don't know if you received the letter, Henry? The email? Did come in today, a couple copies of it. It's the latest review from SW Cole, the consultant engineer, based on the revisions that have been made to the plan. And by the looks of it, it looks like they're all set with the plan. They do have one comment, I think it has to do with the... It might be the homeowners association, or restricted covenant, about providing those. Typically, that's not something we do until, you know, a plan gets approved, then we prepare those, and, you know, the applicant would submit those to the board for review. But that's not something that's really necessary until, really until lots, until a road's built and the lots are starting to get released. So that's something that's typically done after this stage.
The only comment I have is, is to... What we have had trouble with in the past is the realtor selling the lot doesn't quite make it clear to the owner, or the potential, the future owner, that they're going to have or supposed to have a drainage easement. And there has been a disconnect between the lines shown on the plan and something actually going on the deed of the person that purchases it.
Okay.
So that's kind of one of the reasons for wanting to be a little bit more, I guess, proactive with it.
Sure.
Because depending on the realtor, to make sure that that gets in the deed when the sale happens, that hasn't worked out so well in the past.
Yeah, and again, I mean, that's something we can get together for, you know, put together for you, and I would ask the board that, you know, before any other lots within the subdivision are released, that you have copies of those covenants in hand. So basically, you control, you know, the potential sale of the individual lots.
Through the lot release process.
Through the... Correct. So those are the important ways prior to the lots being owned.
See, the other part that we're still researching a little bit is if they're the ones that are... If we do require that you put a sidewalk on one side, then that's... Looks like that's going to be part of it too, Henry, that I want that person that's buying the lot to know, aware that they are going to be responsible...
Right.
To plow it, you know, keep it clear, free of obstructions, whatever.
And the town will maintain it, correct?
Well, it's why, so soon once it's accepted by the town, and hopefully, within the first year or so, there won't be a lot of sidewalk repairs required, but, yeah.
Eventually.
It... We're still...
Before we get too far in it, something the chief's got to say before we...
Okay, I'm sorry.
You want me to set the framework for...
Absolutely.
Okay, can you open this up and show us the general plan? Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, so somewhat related to this project is the Blaze Drive, as it was previously referred to, continued all the way up to the cul-de-sac. And so we had the situation of Margaret leading to Blaze, leading to Allison, which created some...
Public safety.
Public safety issues with... Police chief was here tonight to discuss what has transpired.
So if you... I don't know if you can focus on a little bit closer on this, but you're going to see Mora Lane right here. And the original development had Mora Lane and Margaret, then Blaze was added on after. So probably Blaze should have been Margaret, right from the original planning stages. Where we're now going to have another dogleg, so to speak, off of this right here, for public safety reasons, 911. To have it go from Margaret to Blaze to Allison, is a little bit confusing for 911 and responding police, fire, and EMS. So where it is more, looks more of a natural two streets, the street naming committee is requesting or recommending that this become called Margaret, and then to Allison.
So as a result of the public safety committee's recommendation, SciTech has changed the name on the plan to show Margaret was... The last time we saw it, it was Blaze Drive. Now it's Margaret.
And that was a request of the planning board.
It was.
To get that resolved, and we did have a meeting with the street naming committee to discuss that, and it was decided at that meeting that it would make a lot of sense in the world to name it Margaret Street.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, chief. Good evening, have a good vacation. Thank you very well. Now Mora's going to stay Mora?
Correct.
Okay. So it's just going to be Mora, Margaret, and Luba, three names?
That's correct. Where it was a street extension, I mean, Blaze Drive was basically a street extension on Margaret Street. It was puzzling why it was named Blaze.
The state did it with 128.
That's still one of the most confusing, you know, 93 south, 95 north. Just one's north, one's south, you're on the same... I don't get it. But, yeah, in this case, it was just as confusing to first responders. I mean, obviously, for the residents of Blaze Drive, it was simple enough for them, but I mean, it's... It does make sense to make that change, and again, the street naming committee agreed to make that change. So, you know, in addition to... One other thing I'd like to bring up, too, I have some plans that I do, that I'm going to submit to the plan about tonight. In addition to the Moniza Estates subdivision, we have prepared a plan for the improvement of Mora Lane, the unimproved portion of Mora Lane, down in this section that connects the section of Mora Lane from Donnelane out to Hathaway Road. We've prepared the plan, we actually had a meeting with the board of selectmen, water commissioners, on Tuesday night, and they looked at it, and they recommended or voted to approve it, the installation of a water main, because we're proposing, as part of this development, there's a six-inch water main that comes down Mora Lane, and it takes a 90-degree turn down Donnelane, and there's an eight-inch water main in Hathaway Road. And the only connection to the Hathaway Farms development, to Hathaway Road, is through Margaret Street at the entrance, and then it goes in and kind of loops around here. So what we're proposing to do is to make that connection through the unimproved portion, currently unimproved portion of Mora Lane, to create a loop through that development, help increase the water pressure.
How big is that, bud?
That's a six-inch. This is... There's a six-inch in Mora Lane now in Donnelane, or on Hathaway Road, it's an eight.
So you're going to go from eight to six?
Eight to six, because within the development.
Yep, I understand.
It's a six-inch that we're proposing there.
You saw the people on TV, you didn't understand?
Yes. It's my understanding, and we're supposed to be getting some written correspondence from the selectmen, that the... They have evaluated the water system in the area, and there is adequate pressure for what we're proposing on the Moniza Estates subdivision. I know they've had water in the current, who handles the... They have a model of the entire system within the town. They've plugged in the proposed connection that we're showing here, and also the Moniza Estates subdivision, and there is adequate pressure.
It's going to help the old man, right? Gentlemen, any more questions?
I have a few questions. Okay, so we've been talking about sidewalks, and I think we need to be specific. Your plan, as is shown, does or does not?
Does not. We have submitted a written request for a way of on the sidewalks.
Right, so that's something that we're going to have to make a decision on, or you will have to make a decision on.
Yep.
The next...
Now you mentioned that we're waiting an opinion from town council, I think, in terms of who's the responsible, who's going to be responsible...
Who's responsible for maintenance, and who's responsible for keeping it clear, pretty clear?
Yep, okay.
Which will affect the covenants?
I understand.
Which you mentioned.
Is there anybody out there that's interested in this Moniza Estates? Either you guys, are you here because of this?
These folks are here.
Nobody, yes?
I am.
Okay. I want to make it clear on this, at least from my perspective on the sidewalks, I don't really care what it's going to cost the developer to put it in. What I do care about is the people who are going to end up with the sidewalk in front of their house. You know, what their responsibilities are, and whether I want them, you know, I'm going to have to listen to them come in and say, "Well, why do you have a sidewalk for them, for me, and not for anybody else?" And I need to be prepared to make that decision, and I'm not ready yet. I mean, right now, it looks like if you've got a sidewalk in front of your house, like if you were in the existing subdivision, you had the sidewalk in front of your house, you'd be responsible for being out there with a snow shovel or a snow blower to keep all 150 feet of it clear, every snowstorm, or slush storm, as we've had this year. And that's the part that I'm grappling with. You know, it's not the cost to the subdivider. To me, that's... It's not inconsequential, but certainly, in terms of the overall development cost, that's a small part of it. But it's, do I want to burden the person that's going to live there with that sidewalk in front? That's what... I've got to answer that question in turn, and I haven't got an answer to that yet.
Could I just add to that, add a comment to that? You know, in terms of the sidewalks within the development, really...
We also know that there's no sidewalks in any of the...
Well, no, no, what I was going to say is, if we were to put sidewalks in here, it's just going to get you... If they're just on one side, it'll get you to the cul-de-sac down to, you know, the Margaret, the new Margaret Street cul-de-sac, and that's it. And then there'll be a... But there'll be a section where there'll be sidewalks where there's no property owner there to maintain it. So basically, it's just a pedestrian walkway within the development itself. I would say that, you know, for the most part, you know, you're not going to have a lot of traffic coming up and down this road within the development. But what we are doing as part of this development is we are preparing the conservation and management plan for the open space parcel that we have here, and that's going to be something that's submitted to Natural Heritage and Age and Species Program. On this open space parcel, there are currently a lot of walking paths already in there. Those paths are going to be maintained in their current state moving forward. So any resident in here that's going to use... Say they just want to use the sidewalk for exercise, just to get out and walk, they're going to have that ability to do that back here, in this huge open space, which would be, to me, it'd make a lot more sense. It'd be, you know, it's a lot better place to walk.
We're behind you 100%.
Yeah, so I mean, if the intent is to, you know, give the residents a place to, you know, get out, walk within the development and stuff like that, I would suggest that we're going to have that included in this open space parcel.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
I just wanted to say that we did receive the... I had not received the SW Cole review, I haven't had a chance to...
That just came in.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
Are we responsible for it? I need to look at that before we finalize, you know, any decisions here. And then the other outstanding issue is, which I'm working with KP Law, is how to condition the approval of this plan such that it requires the Mora Lane upgrade to occur first, understanding that if that did not happen, then you would have a dead end that exceeds that, which is allowed by the town. So the board of selectmen and the planning board are very interested in making sure that we maintain leverage to get Mora Lane and the water loop done prior to...
Wouldn't you just condition the plan that the construction of Mora Lane would be done prior to the construction of Allison Drive?
Right. It's a pretty simple thing, but we'll have KP Law draft it up.
I mean, the other way you could do it is just say there's no lots that are going to be released until Mora Lane is complete and satisfactory to the Department of Public Works. I mean, that would be another way to do it.
Yeah. Just want to make sure we have all of our...
I understand.
Keys crossed and dotted, eyes dotted.
I'm just suggesting an alternative way.
Either way, I believe would be satisfactory to the developer. It's his intent to get that done as soon as possible.
Right.
Probably, you know, as soon as the road improvement plan gets approved, as soon as the weather breaks, that'd be the first thing they need to do.
So then, I would ask that we have consensus on an agreement to continue this to March, because we need an agreement from the developers' perspective as well.
Sure. Do we have... Will Stacey and Public want to say anything before we continue this?
Joanne Demers.
I'm done.
Joanne Demers, who plays Drive. I'm just wondering, I know the chief has left. When do I legally become Margaret Street? How will I be notified of a new house number, and that part of the process?
Unfortunately, the chief left.
Right. I didn't want to...
He can't answer that question.
Okay.
He can't answer that question. Also, Brian Noble, town administrator, can answer that question as well.
So I could give them a call and just...
I mean, I would imagine it just stays the way it is until the construction of the road is complete. You know, I mean, why would you try to change it ahead of time? I mean, there's a... In terms of 911, 911's already set up to go to them the way it is.
But they were saying at one of the meetings, and it may not have been here, it might have been where you were on Tuesday night.
So...
Yes, at that meeting, I believe they were saying, we're currently not on 911. Right. So if there was somebody who's unfamiliar, you know, at the firehouse with what Blaze Drive is, where it is, yeah, there's a bit of a difficulty.
I mean, usually, it's the building inspector that sets that, and the assessors that pick out the street numbers.
Right.
Why can't we request them to assign a street number to the houses that are out there?
That was discussed at the street naming committee.
Yeah, that's been part of the discussion, to give street numbers.
Now that Blaze is going to change from Blaze to Margaret.
Right.
So your numbers deal with...
I currently am two, but there's a two Margaret, so, you know.
I almost... I wish that the street naming committee, they would have just named it Margaret Street Extension, so you could have kept your house number.
Right.
It would have simplified everything. But they were in favor of just calling it Margaret Street all the way through, so therefore, you will need a new house number.
I just don't know how I'm going to be notified of that.
We will get that, chief.
Okay. We'll figure it out.
And most of the guys on the project station are pretty good, they know most of the roads and everything.
Yes, I mean, I stopped in, got my barning permit, left, you know, just A-F-Y-I, if you can.
Do you have any other questions you'd like to ask?
I do not.
Is it, how many houses are on that, on Blaze Street right now?
Two.
Just two?
Two.
Just two?
Yes.
Can we just give a brief letter to the building inspector and the assessors to request a number for those two houses? A Margaret Street address for those two houses currently on Blaze Drive? Can we get that in the process?
I think that's up to the assessors, to reassign those numbers, once it officially becomes Margaret Street. When exactly that is, I don't know how that works.
Once it...
Well, I guess it is when we say it is, right?
Once that whole subdivision is accepted, it's like two years' time.
Why, yeah, but why leave it up in the air that long?
I think the intent was to move forward with the name change and...
Yeah, let's do the name change and change the street.
Yep.
Right.
That's in the process. What that process is, I'm not exactly sure, but I know it's in the works.
It's not something that gets done very often in town, so...
Can you go back to the plan?
I would... I still would like to generate a letter.
Generate a letter.
Yeah, and that'll give them a piece of paper that, you know, that they can't ignore.
Right.
Because they don't know what to do with it. Yeah, I mean, it's...
Who's the copy? Let's scob these three.
Okay. The... The cul-de-sac of the now Margaret, former Blaze, now Margaret, the rotary. Can you show us that?
And I take this, police and the fire department are all set with.
Very much in favor of it.
Something in the middle of it.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to show that.
How big is that? 25 foot or something?
20, 20.5 is the radius. And that was, that was, the radius comes up, we established what the radius was on the outside and there's a 30-foot traveled way. So, that's how that radius came to be.
So it's actually. 30 plus one, another 15, so it's 45 to the outside. Moving through a procedure. All right. Had a process where the cul-de-sacs got smaller and smaller and smaller and finally it got very difficult to turn around and.
I guess we're pretty well all set with that. We just have to ask you for a continuation till next month. Do you want to make a meeting now? We got March coming up.
Can we do a mid-March? I don't feel a little, a little quicker, but I know this.
Today's the 21st, when do you want to do, 21st of March?
Can we do it a week early?
I'm going to be out of town a week before.
Okay.
But we could do the week, the first week.
Is that time enough to get everything resolved?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, what is it that needs to be resolved at this point? Other than, you know, I know the board has the ball.
We're going to grant a waiver on the sidewalk.
Right, I know the board has the ball and the waiver.
We need to take a, do a review of SW coal, we need to.
Well, I think, I think we have that.
Yeah, but we haven't reviewed, we haven't reviewed the, I was saying that, but I think, I think we have that in-house.
So, I don't think we're waiting on that. I think it's, you know, you guys reviewing it.
Right, right.
That, which is, you know.
We have to finalize the, how we condition the Moore Lane H and W water loop. And we haven't seen the water pressure tests. Have you seen them from Woodward and Curran?
No. Um, but I know when I spoke to Brian at the selectmen's meeting on Tuesday night, he had mentioned that he is, he's gotten a verbal okay, that everything's adequate, but he is going to get it in writing. He's going to have them prepare something that, you know, we can submit.
In a prior project, that became a, something of a large issue, so.
Yeah.
We'd want to see that.
Do you think that, that, you think you can get that before the, it would be the first, be the 7th, right? 7th of March?
Yeah.
And we're only talking, what, one, two weeks?
Yeah.
Up to you guys.
I mean, I was led to believe that it possibly, could possibly be ready for tonight. I haven't received it, but I can certainly follow up on it and I think we could have that within a couple of weeks. Because again, it's something they've already tested and verified that it's adequate.
It would be preferable if we could get it a couple of days before the meeting.
Yes.
So we don't get into another situation where nobody's going to be an issue.
If, if, I mean, the 21st is also an option, but I know the people who are coming in next.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Sooner than later.
Kind of why I was.
Yeah, I know.
Looking at one a little, a little more.
Yeah.
I think we can get it put together for this, for the second.
Okay.
Guys, also, is that March?
Let's have a look.
We're not heading to Bermuda? I'll go with you. About 6:30 here, we'll put you on for 6:45.
Right. So we make a motion that we continue that we request an extension of the public hearing to 6:45 on March 7. And that will schedule a continuation of the hearing for that time.
Do you agree upon that continuation?
Yes, I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that, I can read the 7th. And with that, we'll take a five-minute break till 7:15 public hearing. We're back from our commercial break. And on this, it's being 7:15. Notice of public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? With that, I'll read this article. Acushnet Planning Commission, notice of public hearing, renewal and modification of site plan review and solar special permit. 88 Wing Lane, 88 Wing Lane LLC, February 21st, 2019, at 7:15. Notice is hereby given that the Acushnet Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on February 21st, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the planning office in the Biding Way Building, 130 Main Street, second floor. This meeting is held in accordance with the Acushnet General Bylaw Zoning Article 8, Sections 3, 4, and 3, 5, and the Acushnet Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Article 3, Section 313, to renew and modify a previously approved site plan review and solar special permit for 2.5 megawatt solar array proposed by 88 Wing Lane LLC. Engineer of record, Steve Poole of Lakeville Engineering. The plan and accompanying documentation is available for inspection at the Town Clerk's Office, Biding Way Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. This was in the paper February 7th and February 14th, 2019. With that, any of the gentlemen from the project who'd like to get up and speak? We do have Hazel here, and please be kind enough to introduce yourselves to the people out in TV land.
Sure, thanks. My name's Alex Fox, I represent CVE. So we're the, I guess, the petitioner of the, of the project, so. Just wanted to make a few comments. First of all, thanks for having us here and we're excited to be making this presentation and looking at undertaking a project in the town. Just by way of a little bit of background, CVE is an independent power producer. So our primary business is owning and operating utility CL solar assets long-term. So 20, 30, 40 years is kind of the horizon that we, we look to. We also develop, do the development of our own projects, but unlike some of our other counterparts in the industry, as I said, we ultimately, ultimately own those projects. As such, you know, we take, some of the core values of the company are really focused on quality because we want the asset to perform and operate, you know, as advertised for the full term of its life. And that, aligned with that is also an investment in the community. So, another one of our core values is really in trying to improve the communities in, in which we work. So we've tried to have that in mind and incorporate it into a lot of our design of the project. And we're certainly excited to, you know, be discussing it further and seeing how we can work with the town and answer, answer anybody's questions. Obviously, this project was, some of the development work was previously done by the prior, prior owner who had the permit which had, which had lapsed on the project. We are hopeful that, you know, based on the fact that it was, you know, previously approved, we haven't made that many, we've only made minor changes to it. I'll let the technical guys speak to that a little bit more directly. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to get a approval in fairly short order, I guess maybe on March 7th at the, the next hearing. We've gone through the process now in Massachusetts quite a bit over the past, past year and a half and, you know, we're fortunate and the, you know, the state is fortunate to have a very robust solar program. But it's been, been so successful that it's actually oversubscribed in some areas of the state. Not this one, but in order for us to be able to participate in the program, you know, we would need to be able to get the project permitted relatively, relatively quickly, so. With that in mind though, obviously we understand there may be questions or concerns of the board, so welcome the opportunity to, to address any of those.
Gentlemen, what we're going to do is a public hearing. The board asks the questions, then we ask the public, they ask the questions, and we will go on from there.
Okay. Turn it over or if you want to ask the questions.
I was just curious, what, what do you look at the service life of those panels being? 10 years, 20 years? Five years?
I mean, the modules, the modules themselves in turn, you know, by way of a warranty, have a 25-year power warranty, which stipulates something like they'll still be producing at least 80% of their rated power in year 25. However, you know, the actual, you know, material lifespan, the actual lifespan should be, you know, well beyond that. We are going to own the property in this instance and it's generally our, we generally have an eye towards operating the plant for up to 40 years.
To that point, there is a surety in place on this project?
Yeah, I was just, I was just, I was just curious. I mean, you know, if, if part of the business model is they've got to replace the panels every five years, well that's, you know, that's their end of it, but.
Uh, no, I mean, our, I mean, once the panel, once we made the investment in the infrastructure and it's in, it's not our plan to, to replace them at any time during the life. Some of the other componentry, I mean, the modules are the largest part of the componentry of racking, but some of the other componentry, including the inverters and since we are integrating battery storage with the, some of that componentry may need to be replaced or refurbished during the, during the term.
That's a small part of the puzzle, actually.
Any other questions? Have you got anything?
Can you take us through the battery storage design? I think you had a second page on the plan that shows the details. That is the only change, really, the only sustainable change between the original and this new plan.
You want to take it or do you want me to?
Oh, um, I'll let you take it. I mean, we've, we're incorporating battery storage and give them the details where it's going to be placed.
Sure, sure. Good evening, my name is Christopher King for the record with Atlantic Design Engineers on behalf of CVE here this evening, as Alex mentioned, for hopefully a renewal and also in conjunction with that a minor modification to the previously approved plan. As Alex mentioned, to belabor it, back in 2014, the array itself was approved. We intend to keep true to the design, everything that was included initially, screening, stormwater, temporary staging area. Our only change is the addition of 20 battery, battery storage components. And these battery storage components, you know, really the state is looking for them because they help improve the efficiency of the actual array, which in turn helps stabilize the grid, which is one of the long-term goals for the utility. The battery units themselves are six foot wide by six foot high, three foot deep cabinets, almost like a rack of server trays, if you will. Individual racking components on the inside. Each of those are set on an eight foot by 12 foot concrete pad, which is, you know, inset with gravel. Again, there's 20 of them and with the size of them, you know, it's a pretty insignificant area or, or change. Everything is self-contained within the cabinets. And, you know, I think it's worth noting, you know, again, in regards to the screening, the cabinets are only six feet high, that's less than the height of the panel itself. So, you know, the screening that was initially approved and proposed and approved should in turn also be adequate for the, for the battery storage locations as well. And we've located them as far away from the wetland as possible as well, outside of conservation's jurisdiction. So, we're hoping that the planning board would not only allow us to renew the previous approval, but also make a slight modification to that to allow us to implement the batteries for four months.
The inverter buildings, that's still in the same location?
Yes.
And about the same size?
Yes.
That was, that was really the only concern from the prior.
Yeah, I mean, there's a little noise associated with that. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want it right next to your bedroom window, I.
So Gilbert, this is a 67 Wing Lane? So that's going to be on the backside where the trees are?
The battery, the battery storage beds?
Yeah.
They are, no, they're along the front here. Along this corner.
On that corner.
But there's screening?
So that's not, that's not going to bother this house, right here, the noise, right?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
You know, there's been extensive studies on the battery, the noise produced from them and they peek out roughly a meter away. And it's, the, the noise generated from them is like into a kind of a quiet library, you know, roughly around 20 decibels.
At, at three feet away. At three feet away. So once you get to 50 or 100 feet, there's no sound.
Exactly, yeah. And with, coupled with the fact that you have the high, the, the transmission lines here, I would think that you'd be more inclined to probably hear those at that juncture than any other equipment coming from the solar field.
How, how are you doing with the interconnect?
Alex might be able to speak to that.
I believe we're currently in the impact study, so the utility is conducting its study to tell us what upgrades need to take place.
Okay, so that's still open?
Um, correct. Yeah, but we're, in this case.
No, I, I just.
I mean, we've paid for the, we've paid for the study and it's under, and it's underway. Once we get the results back, we're able to apply for the participation in the SMART program, which we're launching. All indications are, should be very shortly.
How long is the panel going to be mounted, the same as the evidence will be?
Yeah, it's a racking system and just due to the soil makeup, it's concrete blocks.
The tubs, so it's ballasted?
Yeah, ballasted system as opposed to, you know, peer driven or something like.
Folks, any other questions from the audience about this? I just have something, I don't know if you got this February 20th from the, who you expect to. You want me to read this into the minutes?
Sure.
You want to?
I can.
Go right ahead.
Okay, this is to the planning board from Jim Merritt, the building commissioner. Upon review of the plans submitted for the solar project at 88 Wing Lane, I have only a couple of suggestions. Arborbyde are a delicacy to whitetail deer who frequent and roam the forest around these parts. I would suggest a container of roam blue spruce with a minimum height of four feet from ground to crown. I'll provide you with a copy of this letter. Number two, the security fencing should completely surround the solar field with cameras that cover all the main aisles as was required by a system near Quaker Wells on North Main Street. Number three, the proposed gravel construction entrance or tracking pad should extend a distance of 50 feet onto the site to keep mud and sediment off the roadway during construction and later on for maintenance of the site. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, the access drive should be constructed to 16 feet with an equal-sized hammer head turnaround for emergency fire apparatus at the ends and in greater radius turn near the inverter. Number five, a Knox box with a key to the entrance gate should be required to be welded on the post closest to the entrance gate. And number six, the contractor should be made aware that permits are required for demolition of existing structures.
Can you copy that or do I copy it?
Sure, and in the past, you know, they have a cultivar, cultivar variety of the, call it a green giant Arborbyde. It's deer resistant and still provides the robust evergreen growth that provides the year-round screening. We could, we would certainly implement any kind of plantings that the board would suggest or recommend. It's been our experience that the Arborbyde typically provide better screening than a spruce because the spruce gets a little leggy once it gets to a certain height. So, the only thing I would add is, is that we could certainly come up with some kind of language in the jurisdictional areas, we would just have to keep them native. So maybe that's where, where the screening isn't as much of an impact. Maybe we do blue spruce or something like that and be able to stick with the Arborbyde, understanding it's going to provide a more effective screening outside of the jurisdiction. We could switch it to the green giant variety, which is deer resistant. Outside of the jurisdiction, we could switch it to the green giant variety, which is deer resistant, if the board is amenable to that.
But they're green giant, I mean, that's a giant, because they grow huge. That's not gonna affect your...
I mean, we would reserve the, I mean, we would, my understanding is with Arborbyde, you can top them. And so, I mean, if we, if we start in at four feet, once it's established, I think they'll grow at a rate of about a foot a year. But given the distance from the fence line and back to the panel, I think it would be a good fifteen to twenty years before we would have to top them.
Well, I have, I have some that I bought, when I bought the house. And they're about, I say they're about fifty feet tall right now, and that's been fifteen years. And I bought them, they came in an envelope, they were like little sticks, I honest to God, and I planted them, and they started growing, and then I transplanted them to where I wanted, and I have a line, a line of them, I have twelve of them, and I mean, they're huge.
You also put good...
I don't know, I never fertilized the things, they just grew like crazy, and they're like twenty-five feet in diameter. That's why they call them giants.
Right, green giant, yeah, yeah. And like Alex said, if they get to a certain height, we would certainly implement something into our operation and maintenance plan, so we basically effectively poller them.
I think it's just a building inspector making a suggestion.
Sure.
I'm sure that you'll work close with him, and depending on how it works out, we'll go for that. Any other questions, folks? Bravo corn, please feel free, now's the time. With that, do you have any other questions?
Just recommend the continuation.
Continue this on to March seventh.
Wait, might I just ask a question?
Certainly.
I just, I just wanna understand, I think for most of these suggestions in the letter, we would be, be fine without integrating those into the plans. Is there a time that you need to add it back in order to review it, so that you can vote at the next hearing?
Well, we're jamming this in, it's, it's two weeks down the road, unless you guys can get it in, at least to the building inspector, a week ahead of time?
Right, I think we'd be fine.
Is that out of the...
That's a quick turnaround.
I know we're, we're jamming in.
I have another question, you know, I always have questions. When would the, the project start, if everything goes through?
The timeline's a little, I mean, to a certain extent, we're a little bit dependent on the utility at this phase, but ideally, if all the stars were in alignment, we would like to be constructing before the end of the year.
Oh, before the end, so...
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, we would go through a few other things internally, you know, as we had promised.
Very. Half an hour good from the eastern states next week, or you need more time?
Half hours, all we would need.
So go seven fifteen?
Yep.
Gentlemen, seven fifteen, okay with you guys?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have one other, in terms of putting in the video cameras, I mean, our, on the other projects we've done, we, we have not incorporated video, I mean, the fences, obviously, is a requirement of the National Electrical Code, and we comport with that, but I don't, I don't think we're concerned enough from a security standpoint to feel like we need to put in video cameras, is that something that's...
The regulations, just, are regulations...
We're not prescribed that you would have to check?
Yeah, but the other side don't have it.
Nope.
The other side does not have it, so... Like I said, recommendations.
Recommendations, suggestions.
We just keep on calling the cops, that's, I call the cops all the time, oh, yeah!
And I just had one more question regarding the conditions. I would assume that we would probably see something very similar to what was previously issued?
We have standard, standard conditions.
Okay. Just pointing out we're amenable to all of those, and condition number eight was specific to the decommissioning bond, and I know there's some question on that.
Right.
So we would just ask, twofold, the condition eight currently reads that the surety be provided in the form of a bond or a monetary deposit, money deposit. We would like to do the money deposit in escrow, if the, if the town is amenable to that option?
That's preferable.
Okay, okay, so that would, and then the last thing is that it mentioned an amount in condition eight, so we would just ask that either be updated per whatever comes out of the, the due diligence on, on the, on what has already been submitted?
Yes.
Or maybe something at the end align flexibility, the amount or otherwise determined by the board. And so that if we don't come to that resolve by the next hearing, like Alex said, time is of the essence for us to participate in the program?
We'll have an amount.
Okay.
We'll, we'll specify an amount.
Okay, because we'd like to be in a position to close and get the paperwork in hand, because in order to get into the program and start that process, the approval paperwork is the most, everything hinges on that, and so...
We've been doing this for a long time.
Yep, we don't do this.
All right.
You guys just have to deal with ever so, it's not your choice. Anybody else? Please feel free, tonight's a night. With that, we need a verbal agreement to continue this meeting till March seventh, correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion? Are you gentlemen, number one, give us a verbal agreement instead of us asking you to write to continue it? A verbal agreement to continue this meeting till March seventh at seven fifteen?
Uh, yes.
Is there a motion, gentlemen? Motion to continue at March seventh.
At seven fifteen?
Yep. All in favor? With that, we'll meet you folks at seven fifteen on March seventh, same time, same place, same channel?
Great.
And if you have any other challenges, if you could get any of your stuff together a week ahead of time, so we can hand it to the building inspector, who is a zoning enforcement officer, who can go through it and make his final suggestions, would be much appreciated.
Great, no problem, thanks guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Take it again.
Thank you.
With that...
You guys have a good night?
All right.
Even. Okay, last one, yeah. Done with that, done with that, done with that. Any other plan or ideas in there?
How's that?
That's it, downtown. Gentlemen, is there a motion?
Yeah. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, at seven forty P M, we'll see you March seventh.